All right, let's start the meeting. Call to order, and if you would do a roll call, Amelia, and we did hear that you were at the last meeting, that you were officially the director role, so congratulations.
Thanks.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Two.
Very deserving.
Cindy Wright.
Here.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Here.
Larry Gostud.
Here.
John Glasspool.
Here.
Josh Grant.
Here.
And Jim Weezer.
Here.
And Greg Myrie.
Here.
Excellent, okay. Did everybody get a chance to read through the minutes from September 26?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, Wayne, thank you.
Second.
All right, and Jim? All right, any discussion on those minutes? No further discussion, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you. Let's move on to our, the public hearing, 981 for applicants Nicholas Beeson and Jennifer Albright. Please approach, that'd be great.
All right, so please take notice that an application has been made by Nicholas Beeson and Jennifer Albright of 4036 Elliott Avenue, Minneapolis, Minnesota, for a conditional use permit to build on a dwelling on less than 40 acres in the Ag District in Houston Township on the following premises: part of the southwest of the southeast quarter-quarter in Section 36, Township 104, Range 6, in Houston County. Said applicants standing and making application are as holders and owners of an enforceable option to purchase full interest in said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room in the City of Caledonia, Minnesota, at 5:40 PM on Thursday, October 24th of 2024. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at 304 South Marshall Street in Caledonia, or emailed to myself, and must be received by Tuesday, October 15th of 2024 to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered part of the public record, and that was advertised on October 9th of 2024.
Okay, great, thank you. Would you like to add anything in addition that we have here? You have your packet of information. Would you like to mention anything to us?
I think the only thing we want to say is that we both were raised in this area, in Hoka and La Crescent respectfully, and we're just looking forward to coming back. We have a lot of aging family members, we want to be down here and closer to them to be able to help care for them, and just enjoy them, you know, and enjoy the beautiful area, so that's it.
Okay, excellent. All right, would you like to go through, let's see, anything else that we have, any questions from anyone on the materials here? Ready? The Commissioner? Okay, how about public comments? Have we received any public comments, Amelia?
I did not get anything prior to the board packets going out, or I guess since either.
Okay, and I viewed the site, did anybody else view the site? Okay. Jonathan did as well.
Yeah, we did a CUP hearing, I don't remember how many of you guys were a part of that back in 2021, and it's just expired. The only difference this time is they are looking to change the location of where they build.
Okay.
Where was it before?
Kind of south of where the, so if you go down, there's that accessory building there, and then they were going to build kind of along the road, yeah.
Okay.
On that same side of the ditch.
So now it's located, eh, kind of on the other side, it looks like, yeah. Good pictures.
Is that a deep ditch that you gotta go through to get your driveway across that?
No, it's not buried.
No. The plan, I don't know how much information, but the kind of the plan is to pour some rock in there, you know, for the construction trucks and stuff to get through there, and then eventually, you know, either cement in, or, you know, if we need to, we can put a culvert in beforehand, which I'm sure.
Is there any running water in there?
Not that I know of.
It's a dry run?
Yeah.
Spring rains would be the only time there'd be any rain, water coming down?
That was a DNR's comment, and I don't think I did include that, but she just wanted a culvert that was wide enough, and I don't think she realized it was a dry run, because she didn't want it to perch so that there was no obstruction to fish movement, but that's not an issue anyway, so.
I don't think they've been there for decades.
Okay.
I was just looking on Beacon, the ditch actually classifies as wetland, though.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works, just in your Section D here.
Mm-hmm.
They wouldn't be building in it, but if you have to disturb it, that's a whole different ballgame.
Yep, and so that would be something we'd review with our TEP panel.
Okay, good note. Mm-hmm. Okay, anything else? Any other questions from anyone, before we go into the findings? So then we're going to discuss each of these areas and how it affects the planning that we have, that's what we're doing, by going through that, and we can probably bypass some of those questions.
I'll make a motion that we take 9, 12, 14 out.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Do we have a second?
Second.
Gosh, okay, sounds good. All those in favor of removing those three for our discussion at this point, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Amelia, you want to go through the findings with us, please?
So number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan. Staff analysis states that the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance both restricts non-farm development to minimize incompatibility between agricultural uses and residential uses, and push to conserve the expenditure of public funds for scattered development. Since partial development has already taken place in this parcel, Stafford is a good area to encourage further development, and in addition, there is limited commercial agriculture in the immediate vicinity of this proposal, and the location satisfies the density limitations.
Okay, questions on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, number three.
Two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis states that the applicants intend to build a single-family dwelling to move back to the area, and a CUP is required for that request.
Okay, any questions on that one? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, number three.
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Staff analysis states that a septic system designed and installed by a licensed septic professional is required, and a contractor has been on location and determined there to be two type 1 locations.
Okay, any questions on that? I think you've laid it out for us, it looks like, in there.
I got a question, what's a two-type, what was that, two-type, one-location?
Type 1?
Yeah, type 1 is just a standard system, and so code requires on new lots that there be at least two locations, with the idea being the initial and then a replacement. And so I just asked them to have somebody out just to make sure that there was adequate soil to support a system, and so they just punched some holes to check that out, and it didn't pass. I didn't look at, I think probably amount is what it came out at.
So there's two options, is that what you're saying? There's two?
Yeah.
Two type 1?
Yeah.
Options, propose, okay. Okay, any other questions on that one? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number four, please.
That the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis states that the applicant will need to meet all requirements of their erosion control plan to address any runoff concerns before and after construction. A culvert sized appropriately to match the bank full stream width shall be utilized so there's no impact to flow in the dry run.
Okay, any questions on that? I think we've briefly discussed it, that it's been dry. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number five.
Five, that the soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis states that non-farm dwellings cannot be constructed on prime agricultural soils. This site meets that requirement, and the soil type is adequate for building, provided it conforms to the natural slope of the land.
Okay, any questions or concerns on that one? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number six.
Six, that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Staff analysis states that the treatment of septicage is likely the biggest potential pollution hazard, but a septic system designed and installed by a licensed Minnesota professional should mitigate that risk. In addition, all erosion control methods approved by the SWCD during the permitting process shall be followed to reduce risk of sediment reaching the intermittent stream.
Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number seven.
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that a driveway was constructed with the initial build on this property and still meets applicable standards. Many utilities already exist on or near the site, and if any new utility installations are necessary, it will be the responsibility of the landowner.
Any questions or concerns on that one? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, on to eight.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states adequate space exists around the building envelope of this parcel so that no parking on the township road will be necessary for future residential use.
Okay, any questions or concerns on that one? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we'll forego nine, and on to 10.
So 10, that that conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that this area is not widely inhabited, and that this site is partially developed. There are dwellings approximately a quarter-mile before and after the site on the township road, and aside from that, the area uses are primarily recreational and agricultural, and a dwelling should not affect the use of those properties.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Levin?
Levin, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that predominant uses are recreation and agriculture. Presumably, the topography adjacent to the township road limits the development that can take place in this valley. The addition of a dwelling on this existing site should not affect the surrounding properties.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, on to 13.
13, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Analysis states that this is an area of limited development, but two other residential sites are located along Hopolo Road and adjacent quarter-quarters. This proposal is consistent with those properties.
Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. 15? We have 15?
So 15, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. A non-farm dwelling should not negatively affect the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare.
Okay, any questions on that? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we're in agreement on the findings, do we have a motion to accept them as presented?
I'll second it.
Greg? Okay, and Wayne? All right, let's do a roll call vote on that one.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Jonathan Glasspool.
Yes.
Larry Gostud.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Okay, great. Motion is approved. How about, if we could make a motion to recommend to the board a conditional use permit, do you want to, is there any comments on that?
Read the conditions first, please.
So, it's a motion to recommend to the Houston County Board to approve a conditional use permit for a single-family dwelling under 40 acres with two conditions in Houston Township. One, that the permittee shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations; and two, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is complying with the conditions and all of their applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances.
Any comments on that? We have a motion to recommend that?
I'll make a motion to recommend the planning commission to give them the CUP.
Second?
I'll second it.
Greg?
Josh, was that you?
Josh, second, okay.
You third.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, roll call?
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Don't get in. Josh Grant.
Yep.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Jonathan Glasspool.
Yes.
Larry Gostud.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
And Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, we're unanimous on it, okay, sounds good. So, their meeting on November 5th is where they would officially approve of that, we're just recommending that it moves forward to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
You guys don't necessarily need to attend that meeting, I'll let you know how it goes once it's over.
Perfect, thank you.
Beautiful spot, good luck, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, just a comment or question before we get into the public hearing portion of this tonight, solar panel installation, some questions have come up about that, maybe we could have a discussion on it, for those that have received those questions from residents of the county, and have some discussion on it, if we could do that before we move on. Anybody want to address that?
Well, we've been having a lot of people come around that want to put solar panels in, and they're paying big money for the land, and they're taking up really good quality farmland.
Right.
We want to try to get some kind of an ordinance to establish, so they can still do their solar panels, but they'd have to be on a different, where it ain't no farm land, or like up against a hillside, maybe in a pasture, but they want to come in and use prime farmland, and they're paying $18,000 an acre for the farmland.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we want solar panels all over Houston County, do we?
Are they buying the land, or are they?
Buying the land.
They are buying.
Is this more of a commercial?
Well, I imagine that some solar companies, I don't know the names of them.
Or how many, like, megawatts, or what's the size?
Yeah, they got them up by Chatfield, they got them 40 acres.
Yeah, it's pretty expansive, I've heard that too, from people in different townships that mention, in their area, they're, they just are concerned because of their, you know, the lack of discussion on that, and it's just happening.
Yep.
Because if you don't have an ordinance in place, you know, or some restrictions, or questions, or whatever, so I think that's what we're talking about.
Research that a little bit, Amelia?
So, and I can fill you in a little bit too, so I was contacted a couple months ago by a company that was looking to, or they were just giving me a heads-up, that they were going to be reaching out to residents kind of in the southern part of the county, and so Houston County is in an area where it's a tax incentive district for solar because of the shutdown at the Genoa Plant, and they also wanted to stay close to the larger line that runs across, like through Wilmington and Spring Grove Townships anyway, and so they were going to approach landowners, and I don't know exactly how many acres, but for that, they were looking at, I want to say it was like 500 acres or something, that they would have needed to get the system that they wanted to put in that would make it cost-effective for them, and so.
On a single site?
Yeah, or like in a relative area there. So they were going to potentially reach out to landowners here. I did tell him then that our comp plan actually doesn't promote commercial solar in the Ag District at this point in time, so I don't know if that would be something, that would be a conditional use, I believe, but I don't know if that's something that we would necessarily recommend approval of.
Okay.
But it is an area that our ordinance needs an update, and because solar wasn't what it is now when this went into place, so.
Yeah, and as of now, they're less restrictions, really, is that the way I understand it too?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why it's also not, it could be 40 acres or 500, which seems kind of very, too much of a variable situation, too. So, any recommendations on that, any further discussion on what we want to do? Do you want to research that a bit, and then we can discuss it next month?
So, Ag soils is, soils 1, 2, and 3?
Yeah, that's what we consider prime ag, when we're talking farm dwelling versus non-farm dwelling.
Be 1, and 2, and 3, be the top ag land.
Yep.
So if they come in and they found some land that's like 4, or 5, would that be possible, that we could let them build on that?
It could be, I guess, I don't know, uh, quick, what our, can read you what our comp plan actually says here. I don't know that the soils actually changes what our comp plan goal is. So our goal is to encourage options for alternative energy systems in the county, but the policy says that we review and explore standards and permitting requirements for alternative energy systems for personal use or individual residences or businesses. So we're not necessarily look, I guess my read on that is, like what we do a lot of, for variances especially, is to grant these smaller systems that are strictly serving primarily people's residences, and they might be contributing a little back to the grid, not a system with the primary purpose of contributing to the grid. So I don't know that if we were to be approached by somebody to do a 40-acre section, that that necessarily meets what our comp plan intends.
Mm-hmm.
Some way we got to tweak this, do you think?
I think, I think putting it in the, reflecting that in the ordinance would be good.
Maybe once you get some help, we can look into this a little farther.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, we don't want them coming in here and buying 40 acres and taking prime farm ground and put solar panels in, I don't think that's going to be the best idea.
Well, another concern that I would have is that, is, are they asking? You know, are they getting permission or request, and you know, here we have homeowners that have to, residents that have to ask for everything, you know, or other types of requests from commercial industry, so I think we need to be consistent on that as well, so.
Now, these companies, they want to buy this land from the landowners?
I think it's a long-term lease type situation.
Long-term lease, but the ownership would still go to the current landowners?
That was my understanding, yeah.
I don't know if that's fully, you're shaking your head back there. Would you like to comment?
Fillmore County is offering to buy the land for $18,000 an acre. They own it, they're not leasing it.
Okay, yeah, I think you mentioned that.
How are they taxed compared to farmland on the tax rule?
Private ownership, you mean?
Yeah. Yes, are they, are they tax exempt, these companies, or pay taxes on it?
The company that I talked with, he, that was one of the sales points, is that it is still taxable land. When I talked to the assessor about it, it sounds like there's a little bit more to the story because of how utilities are actually taxed, and I'm not even going to attempt to explain that because I wouldn't get it correct, but we could probably have one of them come and speak to it, too. But, and the situation, but the company I was approached by, it would still be taxed, or so they claim. I'm not sure if the county owns it, how that works.
Hmm. If Fillmore County owns the land, would it be taxed then?
Probably.
The company, the company would own the land, whoever owns, whoever's putting in.
Well, I thought you said the county, did you say the county was going to buy the land?
No, no, no. The company putting in the solar panels was buying the land.
Oh.
And then they would own it.
Okay, so it's private.
The county's concern was, was, one, it's ag zoned, would it be changed to a commercial zone, industrial zone? Have to change the zoning of the land to do it, and Greg brought up earlier, hey, what happens 20 years when those things have to be disposed of? It's about the responsibility.
It could be like a quarry where they'd have to reclaim.
Yeah.
Be required to reclaim it.
Put something like that in the ordinance too, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From what I've heard of other counties, I don't think it's uncommon for them to require a bond, or something similar to what we do for mining operations.
Mm-hmm. And where is also in question, probably, and what type of land, because that's the concern, and it wouldn't necessarily support the planning that we have, comprehensive plan, so.
But you said that would have to be close to main power lines.
This particular company, their intent was to stay close to that larger line that runs across like the bottom quarter of the county, so they wouldn't have to put in a lot of infrastructure.
Right. Four or five years ago, they put it in down by the Eisen border from Spring Grove, they came all the way across down to Eisen, and they put in all kinds of these voltage boxes, and they're ready, I mean, I do is dig to the boxes and the power's there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so next steps on that, you're going to find out more information for us, and we need to have a discussion and look at some options for ordinance, and, anybody else have any comments right now? Any information?
I got any ideas?
Well, and it doesn't even have to be for or against, I mean, it's, how does it happen, you know, the process for it, and also just where, and I think it's, that's a good idea.
I think one thing to think about, right, in some ways it would be better if they just bought 500 acres, built one of them in the county, instead of 20 acres here, 20 acres here, 20 acres here, and spread it all over, right, like.
Possibly.
So I want, and like you said, it's not for or against, but we might want to think about if we restrict something like that, it might be better to just have one mega-farm in the middle of nowhere in the county that no one drives by, instead of 20 of them spread all over the county.
Mm-hmm, and it could also be placed on a certain type of land that isn't, you know, valuable in that sense for ag, yeah.
And then you got to find the right landowner that will sell you that 500 acres, too.
Right.
Not a lot of those connected around the county.
Bring it up, the price they'll sell, yeah.
Yes.
$18,000, I could sell Woodsland for that.
Anybody else have any comments about that? I mean, it's definitely something good to bring up, and.
Well, you can keep in touch with Amelia, and when she's going to be getting some help here, maybe the end of the month, so that'll help, too.
Has somebody been contacted, or is this just, or what's driving this?
Comments from others, you know, in the county?
Us commissioners, we talked about it today, or last Tuesday, and Bob brought it up, and we talked about it, and we want to have you guys, we want to talk with the planning commission to set up some kind of ordinance so we don't lose all this good farmland.
Okay, this helps me understand where it comes from.
Sounds good, yeah, nothing in particular, I have heard discussions, though, in it, you know, and there are, there's panels out there, so.
It probably ain't going to be done in one meeting either, so I mean, it's good to get started.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Good, good discussion, all right, great. All right, now if we want to move into, if anybody else has anything else with our discussion before we start talking about what we have on the agenda tonight with the cannabis, a draft ordinance regulating cannabis business in the county, anybody have anything else? Okay, all right, let's, we'll start, you know, with the discussion on that, I know we have a couple of people here tonight that might want to address some of the issues or the ordinance, and what our focus is, especially on the zoning with that, and, you know, this, I just want to say that, you know, from hearing information from a lot of the surrounding counties, or counties southeast Minnesota, which we're primarily concerned with, not everybody, you know, is adopting the same ordinance, they're going to have some different situations within the county. We have two highly populated areas in Caledonia and La Crescent, in our area, too, that have some input for the ordinance and what they would look at. We also have, you know, if you read through all that material that's out there so far, it's vast, and we're talking about so many different situations with growing in production, retail wholesale, medical use, you know, it's pretty amazing, and it's somewhat very specific, but yet in other areas, it's quite vague, so, with the whole ordinance, so we So, we just wanted to start that discussion, um, tonight and also clarify any questions if we can possibly do that. I know that, um, we have, um, Sam, is Sam here? You're in the back. And, and John also from Houston County Public Health and Human Services. So, if you want to give us some input or review, um, some of the information, that would be great to get us started. We also have an opportunity for public input as well.
I just had a couple of things that, and I guess the reason I'll touch on them is because they have been questions I've received from a number of persons. One thing I would tell you is, and I think somebody were at the township officers meeting maybe two years ago and I was there, I spoke and then Greg David spoke. And we both agreed that, and I said in 25 years or so, pat practicing law, this is the most confusing statute that I've ever dealt with. I mean, there's a phrase that, you know, we're, um, or people will say that we're, uh, building the plane as it's going through the air and that's really what's happening here. In that vein, I would stress that what you're looking at tonight with this model ordinance, and we'll talk about that in a second. What I mean by model ordinance is that there are two laws that had to do with marijuana that were passed. One was what I would call, the easiest way, I, I keep track of them as like the gummies and that type of law, that went first. And then what's the second one was the adult use of marijuana law. And some of the highlights that I guess I just had is, is sometimes you'll hear about, we'll talk about cities, municipalities. When you're looking at the statute, they're talking about local units of government, okay? And what does an LGU mean in the concept, in the context of the statute? And it means Minnesota cannabis law defines a local unit of government as a home rule charter or statutory city, county, town, or another political subdivision. And that, and that a town and township have been historically used interchangeably in Minnesota law. And so, when you see it talk about a local government unit, it includes a city or a town or a county. Prior to January 1 of 2025, um, the county or a local government unit, um, city could pr- have the ability to do a moratorium. So, it just kind of frees everything in place so there was some study going on. But after January 1 of 2025, local units of government will have more limited authority to regulate cannabis business. And you'll see OCM, it's the Office of Cannabis Management. And again, as I started here tonight, we talked about the gummies and then the adult use marijuana. The gummy, uh, persons that were dealing with that as a business and whatever, they fought pretty hard to say, hey, we're doing okay. We don't need to be under this Office of Cannabis Management, but they're being brought together with the adult use marijuana stuff under the Office of Cannabis Management. Uh, the Office of Cannabis Management will be licensing all cannabis businesses, but the Office of Cannabis Management or OCM is required before granting licenses to confirm with the LGUs that the licensee has met all local zoning and other requirements of local law. However, the OCM may still issue a license if the local unit of government does not provide certification of local compliance to the office within 30 days of receiving a copy of an application from the office. Some of you will be familiar, it's sort of like that 60-day rule that we have in, uh, um, land use zoning, that if we don't respond or give a decision within that, then automatically the request goes into effect. Again, um, one of the first, one of the first of many things we're going to talk about tonight is, so if we do not provide certification, as the LGU does, of, of compliance with 30 days, what if they're not in compliance with our regulations? Does that mean that then the, um, OCM is going to give them a license? But they were supposed to check with us and make sure they were in compliance before they give them the license. The best that I can get out of this is that it seems to be, the, if you look at it through a public policy lens, it is to not discourage the, or recriminalize use of marijuana or to limit its, uh, you know, expansion as a business. I'm, I'm thinking here that probably what the OCM is looking for and why they have it this way is, or at least the legislation was drafted this way, is to make sure that we're operating in good faith. If we're not trying to limit, um, the expansion or, or marijuana marijuana businesses in a county or a local government unit, um, by somehow dragging our feet on something. But again, it's not exactly clear in this ordinance or in the, in the law. State law additionally requires that the OCM must work with the LGUs to develop a model ordinance for reasonable restrictions on, these are magic words, on time, place, and manner, dear, manner of an operation of a cannabis business, as well as model policies and procedures, um, for retail registration. So, when you look at what, when I initially said this statute was, it's, it's not somewhat vague, it's vague in a lot of ways. But the what is, seems to be clear. And again, clear is, it's on a continuum. The clearer here is, is when you look at this statute here, this is, things that are unclear, this is the most thing that's kind of clear, is that what the LGUs can do is control, like, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, the distance where, where they're located, the time that they're open and sort of kind of the manner, like when we'll talk about later in the ordinance about where they're located as far as if it's industrial or commercial, that type of stuff. Again, um, and so what you see before you tonight was in your packet was the, um, a draft of the model ordinance that then I used in working with John Paglisa from Human Services as well as Amelia from, uh, Environmental Services to put together a draft. And, um, and, and, and being that it's a draft, it's a, it's a, it's a working document. Again, um, when you take a look at that, I think there's two lenses that you should look at that model ordinance or when you're making your, your recommendation. If you look at cannabis through the lens of alcohol, how we treat alcohol, you're going to have problems, I believe, if you treat it as a second-class citizen, if you treat it differently than alcohol. If you look at how alcohol is treated, and again, it's not a, a, a perfect fit, but by and large, the information that I've received at training and talking to other county attorneys, other city attorneys, um, is that if you, if you look at it through like alcohol and you make your decision based sort of through that lens, you know, it gives you, it gives you, when you're, if you're going to have an argument or get into litigation, you're, you're starting from a, a, a good position. But the thing to understand is, is the question would be, can a local unit of government prohibit cannabis or hemp businesses for operating in its jurisdiction after January 1st of 2025? Nope. Can a local unit of government prohibit all possession or use of cannabis in its jurisdiction? Nope, you can't do that. So, that's the start of the rules of the game, right there. All right. Now, the, one of the big questions I have is, it's, again, of the things that are unclear, what's kind of clear is what we have to do as far as businesses. We have to allow, it's, the language is clear that we have to allow, a low, LGU has to allow one cannabis business per 12,500 citizens. The question you have is like in Houston County, we have roughly 18,000 citizens. We're not at, even my attorney math, 12.5 plus 12.5 is 25. So, you'd think that you would need 25,000 before you would have to have two. There seems to be, there is some interpretation that, that statute can be meant to be two. But the plain language is 12.5. Again, um, there are some reasons and some thoughts that I'll give regarding that number at the end of, of my presentation here. But that number does have to be set. And that number, um, can be unlimited. It's, it's just, but you have to have one. It's probably good advice to have at least two, but there may be some reasons to have different numbers. Another question is if the county adopts an ordinance regulating, and this is the one that I get most often, regulating cannabis and hemp businesses, does that apply to all the cities and towns within its boundaries? And of course, yes, it could. So, it means it depends on how we structure our ordinance. Both cities and counties are permitted under the cannabis law to regulate, as I said before, time, place, and manner restrictions of a cannabis business. A county ordinance regulating cannabis and hemp businesses could apply to the cities and towns within its boundaries. This is because Minnesota law grants the counties the broad authority, and I'm going to hand something out here, under, I don't know how many people are on Planning Commission, but I have a bunch of copies. We have a statute, 145A regarding these, regarding local ordinances. And the argument, and we'll talk about that with that, I mean by that in a second, would be that, um, that 145A 05 sub 1, and that's the one at the top there I have highlighted, and then it's sub 9, it's at the bottom that I've highlighted, that's what I'll be talking about tonight, just those two. That county's broad authority to promote and protect public health under Minnesota statute 145A 05 sub 1. A county board may adopt ordinances for all or part of its jurisdiction to regulate actual or potential threats to public health, unless those ordinances are prevent, preempted by in conflict with or less restrictive. So, in a sense, or if, if a, the county set in limited, how many marijuana cannabis businesses we had would be, we don't set a limit. So, it's unlimited, okay? If La Crescent wanted to have, say, we can only have two, that's more restrictive than us. So, that would be allow under how, to step, how the process would work. If Caledonia wanted to have three and we're saying you can have as many as you want, then that would be less restrictive. But because the new cannabis law does not specifically address the issue of county authority over cities and towns located in the county and because other state laws allow counties to adopt ordinances for all, not just part of a jurisdiction, a county ordinance that restricts the time, place, and manner of cannabis and hemp businesses could apply to cities and towns located within its borders. Cities or towns may also adopt ordinances relating to public health that is authorized by law. However, so they could, they could say, hey, we, we, we could do it like Hennepin or, or in Hennepin County, Ramsey County, those cities, or St. Paul, Minneapolis, they have their own Health and Human Services. We don't have that in our county, we do that all. Now, we may have had counties or, um, townships at one time did their own zoning. We may have, we have cities that do their own zoning, but there isn't a case here that anyone is doing health, um, uh, regulation. Cities or towns may, as you see in the bottom of that sheet that I hand out, may also adopt ordinances relating to public health that is authorized by law. However, at the bottom there, 145A 05 sub 9 states that ordinance must not conflict with or be less restrictive than the ordinances adopted by the county board. So, again, if, if, um, if we said two, they could have one because that would be more restrictive. But if we say two and they want to have three, then that would be less restrictive. And so, that's really a lens that you take a look at. My position on that is, is just to give you information. I, I always think there are two type of decisions. There are legal decisions, which I'm tasked to do for the county and then there are political decisions that ain't mine, that's not mine. And so, I just provide you the information and you decide what you want to do or the board decides what it wants to do. The, um, that, that said, in that model ordinance, there is language in there that, um, would suggest, and I've heard this from other, um, LGUs, cities, uh, and counties, that perhaps, and you can see in that first statute, then 145A, uh, 1, talks in there about how, um, how we can, um, we can, um, to adopt ordinances or all or just not, or, or all or part of its, of its jurisdiction. And so, it is, it is just a thought that some county, or some counties, what they have done is, or at least are thinking about, is that if a municipality, a city wanted to do something a little bit different than the county, that, you know, there could be joint resolutions perhaps and, and that the municipality would come into the county board and say, hey, you guys want to go to the right? We want to go to the right, but just not as far to the right as you. And the county board could take a look at it and say, well, you know, may, I, that makes sense. And then what you can do is get an agreement and where, um, that's, you know, whatever activity that city wanted to do would be allowed. The other issue that comes up would be, um, in this model ordinance, you will see in the, the distances from schools, daycares, and what have you. Those are not numbers that we picked out of the air. Those are ones that are specifically in that, the 342 cannabis statute and that's what they're put in there. And because as counsel for the county, um, litigation's expensive, it's time-consuming. And so, and sometimes you do have to litigate things because that's just, sometimes people, reasonable people or unreasonable people disagree. But I think it's always best to start off with a position that's, even if it's unclear, it's most defensible. And in this case here, using those limits that are laid out in statute, they weren't arbitrary, they're not capricious. They are ones that, that were right in the statute, that's why we, we picked those. If you would have, and, and you could certainly have Amelia or Ms. Miners, uh, chime in on this herself, but if you had a business that didn't say they were at, uh, I don't know, let's say it's 995 feet and they're, it's, you know, it's thousand, you have to be a thousand feet from the school and they're at 995. As most of you have been, been on the Board of Adjustment or are aware of that, there are ways to get a variance for that type of situation. And I think, given how this has come about, um, depending on, you know, the certain factors that allows for variance, there may be some of these, um, applications that would allow, um, for variance. That said, um, I would say to you, um, having went to some, a couple seminars on this, and certainly I'm not in the predicting business, but, um, the people that are, um, running these businesses or attorneys that are counsel for these businesses, this is very complex to run one of these businesses. And, um, for example, uh, they were talking at this, the one seminar is that if you're going to run one of these businesses and you're going to survive, you should own real estate, own the building you're in because it's very unlikely a financial institution is going to give you operating capital with your product as, um, you know, the collateral. And so, you need to think about that. And so, just, that is just one of these things. It's, it's a, it's a very complex, it's a business. I mean, it's just, and, and so, how many of these actually come into effect? It will be interesting to see because there is, it's quite a regulatory, um, burden that's going to be applied here. Certainly ours is a little limited here, but the Office of Cannabis Management, I think is going to be, I, even though there is a presumption, I believe, of trying to license and not restrict people from getting into these businesses, ultimately, you do still have to follow regulations. And again, if you look through the lens of, of alcohol, is that you can have a place that sells alcohol and do all that, but you have to follow all the regulations. And the idea, again, the public policy idea is that it was to bring sale of marijuana out of like this black market and they're really trying hard to not, um, cause through regulation to go back to that. And, and so, um, there will be regulation, but again, I do think the regulation will be in the manner that will try to encourage, not discourage, um, these businesses from coming into effect. So, that's what I got, if anybody's got any questions.
Many.
Yeah, well, join the club. I have a lot of questions, but the answer is the issue, the issue that I have. That's, that's very difficult sometimes. And when you talk to the Office of Cannabis Management, uh, I, I think the first person that was appointed is now gone and that many of the people that are on it are no longer there. And I think that maybe there are four or five people that have been in rotationally there. So, I just, I, I just think it may be difficult for a while to get, um, answers exactly how these things are to work. And I was hoping for, I think a lot of us were hoping for, that this last legislative session, there would have been maybe some corrections or clarifications and none of that happened.
You know how a dope smoker, you know, lives this life? He saves the seeds. And I got neighbors that smoke dope and they go out and they save the seeds and then they plant the seeds. And. And you're gonna be in an uncontrolled mess.
And I would, what I would tell you on that is, is, that's, that's a long conversation you could have in my office sometime, if you wanted to, just call and make an appointment, because that is, we could really get into the weeds on that tonight, which I don't think we need to, but you're identifying a lot of things that I run into on a daily basis as prosecuting crimes.
You know, they're gonna kill themselves anyway. Remember, you guys remember little Oscar, you know, he was from Houston, he drowned. The next door neighbors I had, they smoked dope, you could walk over there, and they, they'd just lay outside at night, all night. And they, it's like this, they were that burned out, that they got guns, and got horses, and rode around on my property, just to say that they were cowboys. And those same guys were over at, I think Centerville, they died. It's going, walking along the road at Centerville. If you think this is gonna be a problem that you can exist with, it ain't.
And the only thing I can say to that effect is, and to move on to the discussion, is that we deal with people all the time, that freeze to death from alcohol around here, too.
Yeah, it's worse than alcohol.
And I'm not saying it's either one, I'm not gonna debate that, but I'm just saying is that the known, known of this is it's going to occur. And so, the train is going down the track, and we need to decide if we're gonna have some levers on that train, because it's going. And, and that's what we would do tonight with that model ordinance, and the county board would do with it, is how do we want to deal with something that's been thrust upon us? And so that's really what we're here for tonight.
You're gonna have to make it illegal down the road. That's the only way you'll ever solve any of this. As I. I know enough kids that smoke marijuana and do that shit, and you can't stop them, you know?
So if you make it illegal, but they already do it, so you're just making them criminals?
Well, they're gonna do it either way.
Right, so what's the point of making it illegal? Criminalize kids?
Well, we could criminalize it, so that they publish it in a paper, that they get, you know, caught for this stuff.
Does anybody have any questions about what I spoke on tonight?
Like, this ordinance here now, are we have the control over all cities and townships?
Well, and that, and, and.
Do we rewrite it so they can have their own?
What I would tell you is, is that, that is a, I need to have three people tell me out of the five what you want to do, the county board, because if that's the direction that you want to go in, you know, I certainly can do that. I will tell you, what I know is clear, is that 145A oh five would seem to give us the authority to do this, and that, you know, if you want to go that route, that's fine, but I would indicate that, again, you may want to look, as you're doing that, and involve the municipalities in this, because maybe there's a way to work out a, some sort of, some sort of authorization of power for what they want. Again, not to say you have to avoid litigation, but it's possible that will occur. It seems to be, again, the reason that, the one benefit of going to 145A oh five route would be, is because, and having control over all the county, is the statute says you can do that. And, and again, you know, so I always liked that conservative approach, because, I'm not saying it's easy, but I know, I can always say to the judge, this is what the state legislature said the counties have for powers. Now, if you want to make some new law, go ahead and do it. But this, and I, and I also think too, is that, I mean, it's almost November, but I'm already starting to see some counties that are moving forward with this, and I think we'll be able, by the time we'd have to do something at the county board level, we could try to get in line with what the majority approach is. And I think that's always, my opinion is always the best way to be, for a couple reasons. One, is that if there's legislation and, or there's an approach that I would suggest to the board, and it's something that Olmsted County's doing, Anoka, Hennepin, Ramsey, whatever the case may be, it's nice to have them fight to fight for us. And then we can just see what happens and go from there. Also, if you can see what, again, like what Olmsted is doing, they're not, they're not rural, but they have a big section of that county that's rural, and so it's not an exact model to our county, but I think it's a good thing to do. And also, frankly, Tom Canaan, that does their civil work up there, is, you know, is very well respected in this area, and so, none of us attorneys are in prediction business, but his insight on this, whatever they would do is probably not a bad idea, at least from my initial thoughts, to see what they're doing, and it probably would make sense to follow what they do. But I don't know what they're doing at this point, but my guess would be, is they're probably gonna follow the majority approach, which I would be, would be following the statute, that 145A route, where we have authority over all the counties.
So that's definitely for, important for us to understand what people are actually doing. We can't just assume that Olmsted County is doing this, or, you know, Fillmore, anywhere around us, we actually need to know those facts. If they have, but I don't think everybody is, even Winona, I know, I've been kind of researching that, and nobody's necessarily made a firm decision.
Well, and, and it's, it's the problem that I, I, I think, until I had some phone calls, that I thought that we were maybe, you know, if you imagine if there was a race, that we were not, we were not certainly a leader in the race, maybe we were out of the blocks and moving forward, but then I'd receive some nearby counties that are like, hey, did you guys even draft something like this, have you did anything on this?
Yeah.
And so, I was providing the ordinances that what I have not. Conversely, I don't know if it's been done yet, but if it's not this week, I think maybe next week, I've seen a draft of it, the City of Lucrent's moving forward with an ordinance on this. And so, like I said, I mean, that's some of the problem, we don't know what anyone else is doing, because everybody's at a different stage of this.
So, like, Caledonia already has their own ordinance. So, what, when do they follow? Houston County or California?
If we, if we would pass an ordinance that would say that we control, we would supersede their ordinance, we could do that. And it may cause some litigation, or it may be, hey, we're gonna supersede you, you have this ordinance, it, these are the differences, let's sit together and figure out a way to work out an approach where we can work together on this, and then maybe there's, it can be joint resolutions, so we cede some of our authority to the City of Caledonia.
Well, I mean, you're looking at the City of Caledonia and Lucrent, they're looking at businesses coming to town. I mean, are we gonna just chase these people away?
Well, and that's why, that's why I think I made right away that definition of, there are legal questions and there are political questions, and that's a political question.
You guys don't understand this, anybody that smokes dope ain't got no money. You know?
I get that, but, but my, my, my understanding.
Ninety percent of them people don't have any money.
But it's not, it's not the people smoking it?
They're customers, it's just like, somebody that walks into a liquor store and.
I mean, it's the people that own half of downtown La Crosse that want to put in these places.
So, oh, go ahead.
These dispensaries are gonna be just like liquor stores, there are only gonna be one or two in each town that's gonna survive. And how many liquor stores do we have in Houston County? Very few towns have them.
And I would, I would suggest too, is, is that, if you do any reading at all on Colorado, when they were the only one in town, everybody would go there, and they had marijuana tourism and all this, but that has just really shrank, because it's proliferated other places, that the only ones that survive are the very well organized ones, and there are very few of those. And it's the same thing, I think you're gonna see an initial amount of people that want to do this, once they see the regulatory hurdles, no, I'm not doing it, and there's gonna be a certain amount that get into it perhaps, and then it's a lot of money upfront, you gotta have real estate, you've gotta have all that. And I think, again, you're gonna get down to, like you're saying, it's, there are a certain amount of people that can put together a liquor store, there are a certain amount of people that maybe would want to and think it's a good idea, but they don't have the capital to do it, I think you're gonna see the same thing.
So, just a question about state licensure. So the state is licensing, right?
Well, and I would say it's this way, is that they do the licensing, but it's contingent on our regulation here, and we do come first, and then you go to, on the flow chart, it would be us, and then it would go to the OCM. But then the OCM can give them the license, if, within 30 days, if we haven't acted upon the application. So yes, they would do the licensing, I think, what you see the OCM is, it's just another government agency, like the Department of Motor Vehicles, DMV is an organization, a regulatory agency, the OCM is just a regulatory agency.
You know what a real dope smoker was like?
It's, we're talking about the, one of the things that we need to talk about is zoning, first of all, and everything that you talked about with time, place, manner, and approach. And I think, you know, regardless, it's not our decision anymore to say yes or no, it's happening, and if we don't step in and start working on, you know, the regulatory aspect of it, I think we're gonna be behind. So, one question that I have, not only, you know, with the licensure then, but could we possibly back ourselves as a county into a corner that we would have to say, you can be a business, but you can't be, or five other, I mean, I'm just putting that out there, because I don't know if the county really wants to be in the management of picking and choosing.
And what I, and I went, and that's a good question, I get, that's another one I get a lot, is that how do we pick and choose? You would think that there would be some better way to do it, but what, a couple of the seminars that I went to suggest, if you would have to equally, equal applicants, a lottery.
Well, I was told today they're gonna have a lottery, that's how you're gonna get your license.
And, and, and again, like I said, that's, that's what I had heard, is that, and I think, you know, that's what you're gonna see, is potentially a lottery for it.
I think kinda, as Sinia and Greg, both, like your best path, is you keep it high level, you have, the cities decide what's best for their city. And then, I think the issue with limiting the number of locations, is what you do is you just create a natural monopoly, right, that the government's enforcing, and the problem then is, if they don't serve customers well, right, they're doing shady things and whatnot, they don't go out of business, because there's nobody to compete with them. If you leave it open with, a bunch of them can open up, five open up in Caledonia, one might survive at the end of the day, the one that serves the customers the best. But if you limit it to one, that one ends up being the wrong one that don't care about customers, everyone has a bad experience, they're doing things that shouldn't be, et cetera, can't do it. So, giving the cities the freedom to make their decision, and competition, the ability, because it's coming either way, I'm not saying I agree with it or not, but it's coming either way, right? So it's like, let competition handle the, who should get the store.
The toughest ones are gonna survive.
Yeah, that's what I mean about, you know, the county having to say, you can be a business and you can't be, or that, that gets very complex. And if, you know, it's free enterprise, and also, you know, we have to think about the development aspect of it, because if Houston County has nothing, and the surrounding counties do have those businesses, you know, where are those dollars gonna go, outside of the county? So, well, the other question I was gonna ask you, Sam, is, you know, the zoning in the, the areas, it's, it's kind of daunting, because, like I said before, you know, there's growing or production, and there's retail, wholesale, medical use, it's very comprehensive, you know, with the different areas. So when we're, you know, are we talking about different zoning areas? Because obviously, a retail business is probably gonna be in a business district, but what about farms, and, you know, some things like that?
And this is, I'd have Environmental Services Director Miners address that more, but I think that probably has a lot of meat on the bone here, because when you process, clean, all that stuff, there's, what is the pollution that comes out of that, what is the cleanup? I don't know who it was, we were talking previously about, I think it was a really good question, or idea about what happens when the solar panels are banned, you know, who, who does that? And, and I think that is the same thing, like with this, do you require a bond, like a reclamation, like you would for mine? I don't know. And, but that, but again, it's like, where are these things gonna be outside the cities, I think is more of a, there's, that's a bigger question on that. And that's why the county needs an ordinance, and you just don't want to leave it to the cities, because if there is a building outside the city limits, you need to have control over that. And there's, I think we all probably know one or two abandoned storefronts or businesses, buildings that were boarded up that could possibly be used for this, and they're not within a city limit.
Okay.
So, like, like county, let's see, I gotta think, I was gonna say this now. Well, you got, there's so many different regulations coming down the pipeline, and we're about a week away from November 1st. Is it wise for us to implement this now, or should we wait till the 1st of the year, when we get the regular rules that we're supposed to go by, and then do our ordinance, or is that gonna be too late?
Well, and, and what I would suggest is, and I, and again, I will, I understand there's that January 1st date, but you're already hearing rumblings of March and stuff, because the OCM is not up and running, really, to any, any effect.
So it might not happen till March then?
So I don't know if that, you just say you're hearing that, because they just, I mean, with the date set, they don't, they're not there yet. But to answer your question fully, I think what we have to do is what we're doing right now, is that, you know, what I, you know, we had the model ordinance, we're here, we're talking about it, we're getting a lot of good feedback, there are certain things I know in there, I want to put specific language in there regarding that 145A and 145A oh nine that I don't have in this, that was, I think it's important to have in there, I want to make sure I get that in there. I think tonight, hopefully we can get some sort of thoughts from you all on what Chair Wright had indicated as far as the, what should be in the commercial, what should be not, we already had some good information tonight about how many we should have, or should be limited, I think that's a good input to have. And then my thought would be, is sooner rather than later, once we have this, maybe tweak this, take this to the county board at a work session, as soon as we can, once we get this updated from the input we have tonight. And then, it's always been my suggestion, is at that work session from the county board to have, invite City of Lucrent, all the people from the LGOs, Houston, Spring Grove, they're there as well, so you can get their ideas, because they may have an idea that we never even thought of. And I'm all about plagiarism, in that sense. And so if they've got a good idea in something, hey, why reinvent the wheel? Or maybe they have a good idea, but once they understand what we're doing, maybe we can make it work, be pragmatic, and meet each other halfway on it, and, and really work together to get a, something that fits well for the county.
We, we've talked about all the dispensaries, how about growers? How many, how many of them are we gonna allow in Houston County?
Well, and again, that's what, and again, Environmental Services Director can talk about that, but that's one of the issues here, I'm trying to find it where it is, but in the ordinance, but that is something that needs to be discussed, and I think it was in your packet, definitions section, I think it might have been from Sherburne County, about how, what we're gonna define as industrial, and what we're gonna define as the different areas that you can do the operation. And where is that?
Yeah, it sounds like we have to kind of define that, like I mentioned.
Oh, it's in page nine.
Yeah. Wholesale.
What zoning districts that you want to do cultivation, cannabis manufacturer, hemp, wholesale cannabis retail, transportation, delivery, and then I think that handout had some ideas, like definitions of what, you know, businesses would fit in those, you know, what they do, and how they would fit into these definitions under 3.21.
Because I'm sure, once they figure out how many dispensaries there's gonna be around the country, that's gonna determine how many growers are gonna need.
Yeah, right. Your product, yeah.
We gotta be looking at all angles.
So, and then there's the, the medical use, as I read through that big thick, well, online copy of, of the regs, that is very different, people will have administrative approval for this, and then it's, you know, the regulation is very different. Kind of struck by, you can remain in your car and drive up to a facility, and, and, you know, if you have a medical or administratively approved license, basically, for that. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot.
There's a lot of stuff we don't know.
What other, anybody else have any comments or questions for Sam? What other, anybody else have any comments or questions for Sam?
On this cannabis cultivation, the big question I have is, why isn't the USDA involved in this like they were with raising tobacco? Our family raised tobacco many, many years, and we were allowed an allotment, and we had to stick to that allotment. And then, I think we quit in 79.
I know my uncle did, I helped him over in cash, and he had a plant over there, and that was like two of the inch, where you could grow and what you couldn't.
What you grow, what you couldn't. They come out every year and measured your field.
Yep, yep.
And if you're one row over, or whatever, you, you had to destroy it with them in their presence.
That should be done.
And some of that is being done now, like they, like when you, they, they, they'll test for like the hemp, if you're growing hemp, they test it for purity, and if it's over like, it's a point three, if it's over, then you got to destroy it. And so, there is some, but again, I think that goes back to that Office of Cannabis Management. That is really sort of how it's supposed to be handled, the regulation through that end of it. And again, that's some of the problem you have here, is that it, it's just, we're not getting a lot of answers for it. And I don't think they have a lot of staff to do it at this point.
Right, yeah, who's going to regulate this, you know, the size of the area? I don't know what year it was, but then the US government came back and bought out our allotment, so it no longer could be raised in Houston County.
And Ms. Miners and I have had discussions about this, and we don't know anything, but I could see a, a natural, I could see as something where, and again, I don't know if this had happened, but where these are treated like feedlots, where they would give us a grant, so we have a feedlot person that does the work for the state. And so, and so I could see something like that happening, especially if they have problems staffing, that they may come to us and ask us, we'll give you money if you retain some of it, would take care of some of this. And we're not there yet, I haven't heard that, but I just think that would, would seem to be a natural, because they're trying to model on different agencies that are already in existence. I think perhaps you'd see some of that.
You go up to the USDA up here right now, and you can get a permit, grow hemp and to sell cannabis.
Yeah, I'm curious if other states are doing that with the USDA, you know? I don't know.
I don't know if this is true, I seen on TV, is somebody from the State Department said that the first, the people that who apply to grow cannabis, marijuana, the first ones to get approved for a license are going to be those who are unlawfully convicted at that time, will be the first ones to acquire the license, which I can't see, in my own opinion, at that time, it was illegal. But now they're changing their tune back to where you're going to be allowed to be the first one to get the license and do it.
There was, and I think, and I don't know exactly what you were listening to, but I suspect there was some of those called a social equity type of things, where you had the ability to sort of jump in line, if you will, or apply early, some so, and, but again, that is the lens to look at this through, is to do nothing to recriminalize or limit the expansion of this. I mean, there has to be some regulation, obviously, but anything that would tend to recriminalize or limit it is just not in the cards right now, it doesn't appear.
Anybody else have any thoughts, questions?
So, what we're supposed to be doing here tonight, set some, some rules, is that going to over-succeed township, or can the township put some laws on too?
The townships, to, to answer that fully, I don't think there's any townships at this point would have the ability to do it, but if they did, if you imagine it like this, is that the, we can as a county be less restrictive than what the state says we can do. The local units of governance would be townships or a city. So, a township, in theory, could have a marijuana ordinance, and as long as they're more restrictive, or as restrictive as we are, they could. But they would have, but like I said, if they're going to do anything different, it's got to be more restrictive. So, again, if it was unlimited, and they said zero, I don't, I don't know if they could do that, because you have to have one or two. But again, if they had to limit it to one, that would be less, more restrictive so than they could do that.
Could we have a, go ahead.
Who would enforce that though in a township? They couldn't enforce it.
Well, and that's, and that's the issue, that's why I'm saying they probably, none of the townships are in, and they have the ability to do it.
Right.
It's like we talked about with.
Stuff that we do, with land use stuff, the townships, I don't know if there's any townships that do the zoning anymore, because it's just too complex.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So, let's say we went with this ordinance, and we have to have one for sure, could we have like a maximum of six, so that way all the cities in the area would have coverage?
Again, we would have the ability to do that, if you have, whoever, if you have three votes for that, you could do that, yeah.
Well, I mean, that way, we're not fighting with these cities. If we got six in our county, and Caledonia wants two, LaCrescent wants two, we got two to spare.
And I, and I've seen some where they've set it at 14. Why they picked 14, I don't know. They picked 14.
Is that Almstead, Almstead County?
Yeah.
Six aren't going to survive here anyhow, so I mean.
I mean, I, I think the comments about, you know, being more open in the beginning makes sense, rather than restrictive, because, because of those reasons, but that's.
Well, I mean, we go with one, that pretty much ties all the cities in the areas, I mean, it ties their hands.
Yeah, right, right.
We don't want to be doing that.
No, no, that's not fair.
I think we go with a minimum of one and a maximum of six.
You want these customers too, to be able to not have to travel out of the area too. You're going to have, the people are going to purchase what they want to purchase.
I think the best thing you can do is tax the hell out of it. We'd like to.
I mean, you want to keep them in your town, you don't want them going to, you know, Rochester for their medical marijuana or whatever.
You want to do all the.
People that need that stuff, you know, why do they got to suffer enough if they, if they've got cancer or something? Why do you got to put more of a burden on them?
Regardless of people's opinions, I mean, there's people that don't like, support alcohol use either, you know? I mean, we, we have to think beyond that, and think about, you know, it's, it's happening, it's going to happen, so, you know, but also support the development of it, because it's, it's a moneymaker for some people too.
And if they go with a lottery, how do we know how many we're going to get here?
Well, that's true.
That's right.
John, did you have some comments as well, that you'd like to? I don't know, Sam, if you have anything else, or if you could stick around?
No, I can stick around if they, if they spur questions, I'll, I'll help out.
Okay.
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to what Sam said. So, thank you for carrying the ball there, pal. I, I would agree, this is really complicated. And Sam is right, the board will have the ability to exercise authority under public health authority, to have an ordinance that covers the whole county. And I agree with him that it's, it's not necessarily a legal question, but more a political question, or a pragmatic question as to how the board will configure that. I, I mean, if you've got questions with regard to things that I've said, or specifics around public health, I'm glad to respond to that.
Anybody?
Otherwise, I think I'd be kind of repeating a lot of, you know, we, we've done a lot of connecting between our three departments, in thinking through what this could potentially mean, and, man, a lot of scratching your head, thinking, well, if you do this, then what about this? And.
So, we sign this ordinance that ties the public health in there, right in there with it?
What do you mean?
Like, if we pass this ordinance down the road, does that mean you guys are going to be incorporated into this ordinance to take care of all the overdoses and all that stuff, or who's going to pay for that?
Well, I think, if you didn't have an ordinance, ordinance, that they still would be involved.
We'd be involved in that. I don't know that the ordinance would direct that. And, you know, apart from the local ordinances, there's money that was approved in the 2023 legislature for local public health to do cannabis and substance abuse, substance use disorder education. And what that's going to look like is hard to guess. I mean, initially, I'm thinking, so we're supposed to teach people how to use marijuana? That seems odd to me. But then, I think Sam's point of, if we kind of use the lens of alcohol, or even tobacco, we are involved in those kinds of things with regard to impaired driving, with regard to minor consumption, with regard to tobacco ordinances, things like that, and educational efforts with schools and children around those kinds of things. I, I think this would mirror those kinds of, of efforts. We just found out what the Houston County's portion of that allocation at the legislature is, and, you know, just in the last week. I'm sure the state will have some guidance as to things, kind of the curbs we need to be thinking about doing that work. But that's going to happen parallel, that, that'll happen regardless of what the county board does with this ordinance. As I see it, this ordinance is about kind of setting some curbs for the production, the distribution, and, and the retail of, of this product, and, and then being able to kind of have that be understood by those who would potentially do this business in Houston County.
Yeah, it's not like we don't have users now, you know, that your area, public health is going to be dealing with, or, you know, the medical marijuana use. Just understanding more what's involved with that, if anything, you know, that would be an increase. But awareness is great, I mean, the awareness and education, that's going to be a huge plus.
So, we'll be involved in that regardless of what the county board does with regard to this ordinance. This, this ordinance really doesn't talk about those kinds of things, or talk about mitigation for abuse, or overdose, or different things like that.
Okay. Okay. Great. Do we, I don't know if, maybe we lost our member of the public here?
Anybody in the audience?
Yeah, the public, this is a, a public meeting on this. Does anyone else have any questions? Should I ask the gentleman that just left? Go ahead.
I'm Jake Dixon, Caledonian resident.
Mike?
Up by the mic.
Could you share a mic, please? Thank you.
You got a chair, good deal.
What an offer. Absolutely. All right. So, I'm Jake Dixon, the city clerk and administrator for the city of Caledonia. I have a few concerns with this draft, specifically that this ordinance shall be applicable to the municipalities of Houston County, unless they adopt an ordinance, or, so what I'm saying is, I really encourage you to allow cities to opt out of this, because I don't believe that you have any authority to do this type of zoning control over cities, it's a preemption, and we have, so I'll start with 145 that you cited, that is referring to an, to actual or, I think it was actual or potential threats to the public health. So, going back to, or with that, you'd have to be declaring cannabis a public health emergency, either actual or potential, and I think that would just be at odds with the fact that it's a licensed legal product, that might get you into some hot water. And then, in 1.2D, you cite 462, 357, that does not refer to the authority of a, or to the local authority, refers to a municipality and, excuse me, and our right to control zoning. So, I don't believe you have any authority to preempt zoning, so I think that will be an issue, but I do recommend that you adopt zoning for Houston County, you know, broader, outside of the municipalities. Because if you do declare that emergency or treat it like alcohol, your zoning, or your restrictions here for feed from schools and daycares is going to close, I don't know how many businesses in Houston County, if you were to adopt the same standards for alcohol and cannabis, and I think that's worth considering. And then, just businesses in Caledonia that you will close if you enact this, and preempt Caledonia's authority. So, all those would be our concerns. And, let's see, well, oh, also the, I wanted to touch on maximum licenses. We already have maximum licenses for alcohol, and in Caledonia, that's set by statute at five. And also, the way that statute works, is we're currently in use of zero licenses, even though there are bars and restaurants, because if you serve food, that does not count against an alcohol license. So, set the license max wherever you want, and it may not matter, but, or do what the city of Caledonia does, and it let the free market solve that problem for you. Let's see. That is all I got.
Good input.
You have your own zoning too, right? And city of Caledonia?
Right, yeah, and we've, we've maintained a, well, a hemp-derived cannabinoid ordinance for two years already, and we have three active licenses, no complaints, no issues, and specifically wrote our ordinance so that enforcement or compliance checks, which are required by law, can be performed by Caledonia PD and Houston County Sheriff's Office at least once a year. So, we did that with, with the sheriff's office in mind, with public health concerns in mind, that there's no, I guess, no barrier to anything anybody wants to know about these businesses, because we also took the treat it like alcohol to heart, and that's why we copied the same zoning provisions from alcohol into that cannabis ordinance, because if we went with the provisions in the statute, which I do want to touch on that, those are all things that you may do, they're not things that you have to do, you don't have to follow those rules, and the rules, we don't even know when those are going to be released, we don't know what they say, and the public comment period hasn't even started yet. So, there's, I think, really, a wait-and-see approach is probably appropriate. We know at the city of Caledonia that we're going to have to update our ordinance, because something's going to change, and we don't address cannabis, because there's no licenses for it yet, and really, I just don't want to pay more legal bills until I absolutely have to. So, it's, I don't know, there's, that's, well, no, that's it, that's all I got.
I think I would just echo kind of Jake's stance, right? Like, city of Caledonia does all their zoning otherwise, right? We don't step in and say, you can't build that shed there, you can't do this business there, right? They, they control that. And it'd just be like, if the federal government came in and said, here's what Houston County's going to do, well, we as Houston County wouldn't like that, right? So, it's the same thing, you let the local voters decide in the city of Caledonia what they want to do, same with LaCrescent, same with Houston, and so on. And then, we set a broad range for the county outside of the city limits, right, to keep it the way we want it.
I agree, that sounds like, I like that idea.
Yeah, it would get very murky if we were, you know, involved.
And potential fights that we don't want to get into.
A lot of conflicts.
We need to worry about these dispensaries out in the country and growers.
Yeah, I mean.
Let the cities have their troubles, they, but they, they're dealing with it now, and they've been getting by, they've had no troubles, why do we want to interfere?
Well, the zoning and regulation, why would it be any different, you know, for this than, than with cities? Yeah, I think that's understandable.
Maybe when we get time, we can tweak off of their ordinance and work together, so everybody's covered.
And I would say that would probably be pretty necessary, because these 13 license classifications, I mean, everybody up here has said they're confusing, and they're right. I think where there will be the biggest challenge is kind of deciding what's retailer and what's not, and especially with the law already allows bars to serve this product, so that just, it makes things very difficult. And you, I would say, you almost just, you don't want the trouble of doing that, and just let the cities do it, and, because I don't know how many bars are within 1,000 feet of a school outside of municipalities, that's probably a rather unique problem for us, and if you don't have to solve it, don't.
Or other businesses. It's not restricted just to bars and.
Well, and again, treating everything like alcohol, or not everything, rather, but if you, if you treat this, if you, then you're probably going to be pushed to adopt the same regulations for both products, or, I mean, face a challenge right away, that you're just not being fair. And that is why we wrote ours, because in, I think, the minute that, or probably because within days of publishing the public hearing notice, I got a message from a lawyer that let us know that our restrictions were not the same as alcohol, and that was going to be a problem for us, most likely. So, we went back to drawing board and thought about that, and thought it was good advice.
It's complicated enough the way it is, we don't need to make it, you know, more difficult, yeah.
You need stuff about every other day, it's like, so.
And you just have to deal with it, but, you know, also, good, building good relationships, I think, with the businesses, it's a small county community, you know, so communities are dependent on that development.
Ah, yeah, very much. From our perspective, from the economic development side of it. From our perspective, from the economic development side of it, there's two businesses that would not be open if this ordinance passed, and two businesses that have been running for, I mean, two years in one case and over a year in the other, and it's, just, I would not like to have to explain that to anybody why we're coming in and shutting their business down.
Okay.
Wouldn't be good at all.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. That's very important. Good information to have, and we hope to continue the conversation.
Sure, yeah, I would welcome any, I mean, you know where to find me. But the Vikings kickoff at seven minutes, so...
I was looking at the clock. Okay, thank you.
Was that going to be your second?
Who else? Anybody else have any comments? I don't know if we lost our public people, or if they were.
You get all this down, Amelia?
Yeah. Just getting it. Pick and choose. So, so here we are, once again.
I think we should just table it for now. I mean, we need more information, I think, and...
That's right.
I think, I mean, we don't know if it's going to be a lottery, how they're getting a license, or if you're just going to issue a license. We have no idea of none of that stuff, you know?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should, you know, kind of break down, at least, you know, on paper, in our minds, all the different areas, especially for zoning, that we talked about, you know, so if we want to focus on rural, you know, the ag areas, and what does that mean for production or growing, and, you know, I don't think we're as concerned maybe about the retail and in the major metropolitan areas in the county. So, you know, I think that we, if we start looking at, kind of ticking off what we can do, you know, what can, we can focus on now that we know that might change tomorrow, but at least, you know, there, we have to have an approach, at least, you know, a stab at it.
Just walk into the store.
Anybody else, yeah, anybody else have any thoughts on that? I mean, otherwise, we're going to be spinning our wheels, I think, with all the different areas and going every which way, but...
So I put together some more information since the packets went out, and kind of built off of what Stearns County had done, and that was one that was included in your packet. So I took the topics that we had, that Sam had identified in the ordinance, or the activities, and pulled out all of our zoning districts, and the type of uses that are allowed in those zoning districts. And I don't know if it, if you kind of want to just work through that, like a worksheet, and kind of figure where...
Sure. Are we talking about this one first?
Yep, so...
Everybody have a copy of that one?
So we can get an idea of where, what kind of zoning districts you guys think are valid for different kind of uses. And so then, to help you as well, the big one is an overarching map of the county and the different districts that are there, but I realize that it's not super helpful because you can't, a lot of the smaller areas. So then I just, if you want to get an idea of what we have currently existing as far as the highway business and industrial, because we don't have a ton of those areas outside of the municipalities. And so, then the smaller, there's six smaller maps that kind of just show the communities, if they had a lot of, a lot of those different areas, with the exception of Money Creek is the one unincorporated area that has a fair amount of different zoning districts. Otherwise, even Houston has limited. So that's, that's what the maps are, if you guys are interested. I didn't know if that would be helpful.
This is very helpful. Thank you for putting this together.
And then, that other sheet is just, it also kind of identifies, or I liked it because it identified some of the factors with each type of activity that municipalities would have to consider, whether it be wastewater, solid waste. So that one's probably something you can take home and review at another time, but I think what we're looking for now, like Sam said, you guys kind of identified where, or kind of provided input on how many or not you'd like to see it restricted to. And now, we're looking for guidance on what districts.
Do you want to go through this sheet now, Amelia?
Yeah, if that, if that, I was trying to figure out what would be the easiest way to go about doing that.
Well, let's start with that and see where we get.
If it's, if it's helpful, too. So Jordan sent out something this afternoon that had a couple ordinances in it that I hadn't seen yet. And so Nobles County was one of them, and if I recall my geography correctly, Nobles County is probably similar to us, and it's a very ag-based county, but it's in the opposite corner of the state, so southeast, or southwest corner of the state.
You might as well come up here too, Jordan, so you're not...
Participate in the fun. So for cultivation, they identified cannabis businesses licensed or endorsed for cultivation, permitted as a conditional use in industrially zoned districts, and ag preservation districts. A cannabis manufacturer, they have industrial zoned. A hemp manufacturer, it's industrial zoned and egg zoned. Wholesale is highway business or industrial. The cannabis retail, they have as highway business or ag preservation. Cannabis transportation was highway business or ag preservation. In cannabis delivery, they had as highway business. The Stearns County one was included in that packet. Cook County was another one that came out, and that was there up in the Arrowhead region, like Grand Marais area. And they had, they kind of listed it out a little bit differently, but they did, like cannabis businesses could be home businesses in a number of districts. The businesses could be, or then they also had them in commercial zones or mixed-use zones. They have many more breakouts than what we do, but that's another one. And then Stevens County, and I'm not sure that's, is that kind of up in the Wilmer area? Do you guys know?
Stevens?
Yeah.
Stevens, I think, is way over in the west.
In the west? Mike Morris?
I'm not sure.
So they, okay, they kind of had a similar break, or they have similar zoning districts to ours. A number of these are interim uses and/or prohibited, so they're, they're actually pretty restrictive in theirs, but...
Are you saying that all this stuff is permitted?
So the way I have that sheet set up is kind of just so you can go through it and we can circle things, like worksheet. So what I have shown there are the districts, the different uses we have in the district, or the different, yeah, uses we have in the districts. You'll see interim. We don't actually have any uses identified in a couple of those districts as interim uses, but that could be something we add to our ordinance. And then, I guess I just, I made an assumption that in the residential district, we'd want to prohibit it, but you guys can change that if you want. That was how Stearns County had it set up. And so, you can just do some open discussion, Cindy, if you want. I just was trying to figure out how to make it a little approachable.
Yes, this is good, the long page, you know, I think, I like the way it's broken down, and also, you know, where it's, so it states, you know, completely prohibited down residential.
If somebody does this without a permit, then it's illegal, right?
Starts a business, or?
Well, whatever. I could take you down to an island just above Hoka. You go on that island, there's going to be dope there.
Well, the, you know, the enforcement is a whole different ballgame, I think, you know, we're not even there yet. They're currently...
Nobody's going to enforce it, then.
Well, no, I don't, I'm sure it will be, but we don't know, you know, first, we have to set up some rules to enforce, I think, too, and some guidelines, is that, that's what I understand.
If they've got permits to do this stuff, then they can do it.
I'd have to take a look at our ordinance here that we're proposing, but I believe either it has a specific language, or it is incorporated into our overall zoning. And basically, what happens is, is that if you violate our ordinance, then you're subject to a misdemeanor penalty, which is 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine.
Okay.
So on the first one there, it says cannabis cultivation. Over here, it's permitted, conditional interim, or prohibited. Which one do you want to go with there? Do you want to do a permit, or do you want to have a conditional interim, or do you want to prohibit it?
Well, the thing of it is, what you got to do is, you got to make them permit it, because everybody's going to be doing this, and you're going to have to set it up, so everybody's got to pay so much to permit to do this. You can't just let everybody do everything. I go in my neighborhood, it's sad. There's more dope down in my neighborhood than Carter's Got Liver pills, you know?
So are you looking at conditional use, then, if, in the ag district?
Nobody's looking at conditional use, they just do it.
Well, I mean, here, I think we should have, it should be permitted to grow, for sure, because they'd have to go through our county ordinance, correct?
Yeah, but the state says that you can have so many plants without a permit.
I think personal use, you can have so many plants as a, as just an individual, and you can possess so much cannabis. So that's different than the permitting that you're doing with regard to businesses that will be selling, or...
Well, these guys sell it on the sly.
Right, but, I mean, there's a lot of things that are, there's a law that regulates something, and there will be people who break those laws, and I agree, you know, that'll be, we're going to have to also think about, both at a city and county level, how you enforce these things.
See, the new marijuana that's out is a lot more potentially, it gets you higher. And my neighbor, he smokes it all the time, and he plants it, and I've seen his plants. And so, you can't tell me that he's going to get a permit for doing this.
No, no. And I think, you know, we're not going to stop that, it's just that, like, the use of it. But to break this down, as we're talking about, so I'm talking about this, the long sheet here that we had, and did you, you say it was Stevens County, or where, what was this one? I don't know what we...
Um, that was kind of based off what Stearns County had done.
Stearns County. Okay, the first one.
Well, I think that first one with the cultivation, we should have like a conditional interim at.
In the ag district, or do you...
In our ag district.
Want to keep things more commercial or highway business?
In the ag district. That way, we have control over it in the ag district. If they go commercial, they could raise up to 100 plants or whatever. I don't have any idea, and I'm sure nobody else does, you know? You had a question, Bob? What were you...
Okay, cultivation, ag district, but there's stipulations that go with that. You talked about how many acres you could do on tobacco. You can put a limitation on how many acres they're allowed to have, what kind of fencing they got to have. It's in your packet, the fencing, the lighting, the security. They got to meet all of these restrictions in order to cultivate in the, in the ag district. So yes, they can do it, you can give them whatever kind of permit you want, but they got to meet the requirements to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Same with all the other aspects of it.
Yeah, he's correct. Like, a lot, it looked like a number of these ordinances, once they built off or figured out where they belonged, they did put a number of stipulations on, especially like the lighting for these sort of operations. It sounds like they have, use a fair amount of water, things like that. So that's something that I think we would follow up with in our zoning ordinance and address those, those characteristics of the operation.
I mean, because in 3.1, it talks about order mitigation, 3.12 is security theft mitigation, hours, hours of operation, advertising, light pollution. So there's a lot of that that goes into that, in addition, if you did get the permit, you have, you have a lot of things you have to follow, and then on top of what may be contained in our just general land use ordinance as well.
Very similar to conditional use.
Yeah.
When we go through each of those areas that they are required to follow or to have to meet those requirements, so...
And to follow up on that, what you say, that conditional use permit, is that it always has a tag on there, you have to follow, we can give them a CUP, that's great, but do you have to follow state, federal regulations? So we may give you a CUP for whatever, but if you're too close to a trout stream or something, you might have a problem with the DNR. And so we can only give you what we have the ability to give you.
And, you know, and my comment would also be, when we have this, you know...
What does a permit cost?
The manual that we talk about, with everything else, we need to follow that as well. The ag land, you know, and, you know, any of the restrictions that we have, that we have in this comprehensive plan, this should be no different when we're, you know, thinking about planning and or permitting.
Well, I think any cultivation should be permitted.
So...
I think it should be permitted.
Well, that way, we have control of it. I mean, we, I don't think we can stop it, I don't think we can stop it.
That's probably the worst thing we could do is to...
This way, if we permit this guy to grow, at least we have our hands on it, you know? But, I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but I mean...
Well, any discussion on that? I mean, it's kind of along what we've been talking about, you know, with less restrictions. Anything?
I'm sure we're going to stumble across it.
And honestly, we probably don't know the details of how that's going to happen, you know, and the cost or anything at this point, because it's...
I think you guys got to realize that these dope smokers aren't that smart. Because when I was in high school, I had a cabin back in the woods, and we took the kids back to the cabin one time, they took out ragweed and smoked it.
Hmm, that's, that's their prerogative.
Ain't did anything illegal, but...
I heard them...
They got no brains.
They smoked corn silk, too, I heard.
Like Bob said, you know, you set these regulations. And who enforces these? We set the regulations in depth. The sheriff enforces it?
I hear that's going to enforce it.
Well, what would happen would be, is typical situation, and I would imagine it wouldn't be different than our, how we do the land use stuff, is that Amelia, or Ms. Miners, gets a report, she'll say, she'll call me and say, hey, we got the report of this. Maybe she's looked at, or some evidence comes in that it does, infraction does exist. She'll send out a couple letters saying, hey, you need to come in compliance with our ordinance. And then if they've had a couple chances and they haven't come into compliance, she'll contact me and say, what's her next steps? And then we'll make sure, like, their certified letter or something, saying, hey, you need to come into compliance so they have notice. If they don't come into compliance, then I'll have her report to law enforcement, we'll issue them a ticket. And, you know, there, sometimes we've issued, you know, multiple tickets, and to get somebody's attention, and then the normal course of events is usually, they'll clean up the junk in the yard, the cars and stuff like that, because they don't want to go to jail. And so typically, we do it that way. There's a civil way to do it, we could do it that way, but then we have to pay a filing fee of like, it's 400 bucks, and every time we do something, it costs another fee. So it's just cheaper for the county if they go through my office and we just prosecute, but we'll have a ticket delivered to them by law enforcement.
How about, I have a suggestion that maybe we should just kind of look at, you know, what are the highlights of what can we do tonight, so we're not here and we can go out and enjoy the rain? But we don't want to be here all night, because we could get into the details of this, you know, pretty quickly here.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, like, we're not, we're looking for some guidance so that we can take this back to the commissioners and see where they're kind of at as well. This is, I mean, this isn't the final recommendation by any means. They're just looking for your input as well. And so, don't, you don't have to get super hung up on it tonight, we just kind of want to take a step forward, and so that's where we're at.
One thing you should do is if you have any problems, like we've had down there, we've had two young kids come out with AR-15s just to kick a guy off of his property. And you don't need to do that, you know?
No.
Police got involved on it and everything, and it's stupid, you know? But those kids could have got shot, both of them.
So to kind of rein this in, to focus on, you know, what we can do and what we can do tonight, and also any recommendations, we're talking about zoning, I mean, it sounds like when, one of the things that we talked about was that focus on the rural areas, you know, and rather than jump into our, the unknowns with business regulation and any of the city issues more so, that they might be focusing on, and I'd also like to know what they have thinking of.
Well, and then, I guess... And then I guess to circle back to that would be, I, I would think, can't speak for Ms. Miners or Mr. Pocleyso. But I, but I would like to know, it seems to me, what I'm hearing tonight, and it's just what I'm hearing, so correct me if I'm wrong. Is that, you know, there doesn't seem to, there seems to be, what I'm hearing, there seems to be a wish to work with the cities. And not, even if we had the power, and there's some argument whether we would have the power or not to tell everybody in the county what to do. There seems to be, what I'm getting is that we wanna work with the counties to avoid, or cities, the local government units to work on. And just to work with them and maybe find a pragmatic way to either grant some of our authority, part of their authority and do that, would that be a fair statement?
It's in everyone's best interest, I believe, to work with, you know, work with our municipalities if we, if we can. And others that are, you know, involved in that, if townships have a.
And it seems.
Once we realize what the cities wanna enforce.
Yes.
Then we can come in and.
The second thing, I guess, it seems to me that what I'm hearing tonight is that there is. That we wanna find a sweet spot, which we maybe don't know yet, between maybe more than two, but maybe not unlimited. There maybe is a sweet spot there where there's a number, like almost at pick fourteen for whatever reason. But that, something that maybe if we knew if La Crescent wanted to have three, let's just make up numbers. And Caledony wanted to have three and Spring Grove wanted to have two and Houston wanted to have two and whatever that comes up to, that number. Okay, that's gonna be our number, we go out to the cities and find out the numbers, is that what I'm hearing, just trying to find a sweet spot on the number of these places or?
I, I would caution setting a number at this point, you know, from our standpoint, because.
But not even, but not even setting a number, but you have two, what's our continuum here, unlimited? Or the statutory, we have to provide one, probably two.
Could start with two is what we were talking about.
So that's our continuum is, and so where do we follow that continuum?
Well, I can't speak for the board, but myself is, I would like to see us put one or two on with a maximum of eight. That way you have, Spring Grove could have a couple, Houston could have one, La Crescent could have a couple, Caledony could have a couple. And make, like you just said, get with these cities and get everything set up so everybody's happy and.
So my thing would be, what's, why do we need a limit on it? Because the market's gonna limit it, right? So if we just say eight, my concern would be, you get the people that get the licenses, right? And can you get more than one license? Like, could you, if you, you owned all of them, one guy ends up getting all eight in the county?
It could happen.
And now nobody can compete against them, smart guy goes and sets them all up, takes all of it. Hey, the price is going up, nobody else can do it. You created the monopoly for me, thanks Houston County, nobody compete against me, right? That's what I think you wanna avoid, so by not setting a limit on it. You give the market the ability to compete with each other and you're gonna hopefully drive better prices, better service for the customer. I just, right, cause people are savvy, they're gonna say, how do I get all eight of those? And then I eliminate everyone else, I don't even actually operate, five of them. There's one in Cal, there's one in La Crescent, et cetera, and you have to go to those. And it defeats the idea, right? Just a thought.
Yeah, I don't care, you can go unlimited, it don't matter to me, I mean, I just used a figure of eight so we didn't skip anybody, but.
Do we need a number at this point though?
No, and I just wanna spur that discussion, just what we're having here tonight. So we could, the county board members are here, they can, they're just taking in stuff tonight. Just so they can hear all you represent different parts of the county. What your thoughts are, that's what I think is important.
I think we should bring it before the township association board too.
That'd be a good idea.
There's only three of us here on the board, on a different board, townships. And I think we should bring it before the township association and get their opinion, cause they're representing their areas too.
And maybe, and it's always nice for me to make work for someone else, but have Ms. Miners contract to different townships. When we would have a work session with the board where this would come, so the townships. I always think of the LGEs being the cities, I don't think about the townships, maybe making sure the townships officers are invited to attend a work session of the board when this is at issue.
Townships and cities representatives, you know, and I also, we're making a decision on something, you know, we don't really understand what La Crescent or Caledonia has. We heard from Jake and, you know, I think it'd be fair to make sure that we have their latest, greatest update from those areas and then we get an idea.
And they were all invited tonight as well.
Okay, well, and I think as we, but we are asking the question, you know, not just getting their input, but asking the question, you know, what, what are they thinking of right now? And why, which was great to hear Jake's perspective on what would happen, you know, with some of those businesses, I wasn't aware of that personally. So, you know, and then, like I said, kind of flip it back around and look at, you know, what we know we're gonna be looking at is the rural areas and the ag interests in this. You know, so that's something that we need to align with zoning regs. We need to, you know, make sure that we have an understanding of putting this out there with anything else that we're doing and keep it consistent. Because why would we handle this anything different, like a conditional use permit or, you know, for that type of alignment with our conditional use plan, our comprehensive plan.
The other question I would have is in three one, just again, just general discussion, get some feedback on these minimum buffer requirements. How far are you away from schools, daycare, residential facility, we're not asking for numbers, just thoughts about those numbers. Those are provided by the, by the statute. Again, I don't disagree with the person from the city of Caledonia that it is May. Again, there are ways to deal with these issues as far as like your variances and stuff, but just your general thoughts. Is there anything here, when you read this, you'd have a strong opposition either way or maybe a suggestion? That's on page six of the proposed ordinance at the bottom. Now, where did you say those numbers came from? From the three, four, two, the actual cannabis statute. So we don't have, do we have, we have to follow them, don't we? Well, there's some, and again. What, what seems to me very clear, that's what you have to follow, but then there seems to be a trend here that's evolving to its make. And, and so I think that what you would, when you take a look at this here, is that the county board has to set it, they're looking for a recommendation. Just as far as any, again, not looking for numbers tonight or anything like that, but what would your, anyone have any strong opinions either way on the recommended? Cause these are what's recommended in the statute.
I think what Sam had said earlier too is that, I think these are intended that, those are limits that you can't exceed. You can't say more than a thousand, kind of along the lines of being, staying in good faith. So you can't take the power you have as a county and say, we're gonna make you be two hundred miles from a school. Well, there isn't anywhere in Houston County that's that. But I think this is the outside that you can, that your power is, you can go within that, but that's as far as you can.
Because it's clear the public policy is not to use that zoning.
Right.
To eliminate a place, it's like you'll see, like we have an ordinance for like adult cabarets or whatever. And that is being used to limit where they can be and where they can exist, time, place and manner. And it's the same thing here, you cannot use this to make sure that you eliminate these businesses. And so that's why they're setting these thresholds.
Well, I wouldn't characterize this as a requirement of the statute that you have to do it. I think that's as far as you can go. And I think what you were saying is if you're using a guideline, it's easily defensible if it's within the statute.
But then if each city has their own ordinance, they have, their distance is already set, correct?
They couldn't, I would presume, they couldn't exceed these numbers either.
I mean, you can only go so far with it.
So back to a template that we have, it'd be really nice if we had a starting point, you know, to work from, like I said, not be all over the place. And kinda look at, do we agree with something like this and, you know, creating our own spreadsheet that looks very similar? And then also if we don't agree with some of these, like if it's permitted, conditional interim prohibited, why not? And what do we wanna have instead? Because I, you know, there's so much involved, we have to have a way of get a handle on this and move it forward and also get input, you know, to and from the county board.
Can we just start, I'm assuming there's somewhat of a default of what you can do for alcohol today? You just default to that for all these?
For alcohol, is that what you said?
Yeah, so like, let's say, right, we have all these options, all these, right, there's something we do with alcohol of the day, alcohol distribution, retail, et cetera. Just default it all to that to start, and then you could always change here and there, but that would at least give you a starting ground of.
Same with manufacturing and, yeah, like stills.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So you kinda up on the top on one of those gray lines. I did outline the permitted use, or the uses that are similar within that district. And I don't recall there being one that specifically, like we don't have distillery or microbrewery or anything specific in there to build off of. But you'll see like retail uses are in there where liquor store would kind of be included in that. Or even if you guys can, we can keep it very simple and just outline, like, do you think it's a use that you think we could allow anywhere as like a home-based business? Or within any district that that's allowed? Or do you wanna see it a little tighter and be within the industrial or business districts? Or, I mean, do you want anything in the residential district or do you wanna keep it all prohibited as it's kind of come there? I guess even, you can keep it pretty simple too, just looking for some feedback so I can build something.
Do commercial and residential, we'd still be able to permit everything, we'd be in control?
If it was in residential?
And I think, I think it's fair to make this an interim or a conditional use permit, so it's always being reviewed in front of a board, like you guys too. So we can add those extra, if there are specific concerns for a certain site, that's the glory of those permits, is that you can address those.
That's something everybody agrees on, that we want to have it as like we do with everything else.
Use everywhere?
Yeah.
A CUP or interim?
Oh, yeah, CUP.
At least we can get a starting point. Eric, did you have a comment for us?
I just, what are you guys doing on the distances, Sam was asking?
Wouldn't that, I guess, was kinda what we were going at, wouldn't that, I'm assuming almost every school daycare is located within a city limit? So they would, we'd wanna give them that power, not us take that from them.
And I don't think.
You're not here for the city, you're here for the county.
Yep.
And I don't.
City can have their own right.
Right, but I think what we're saying is if we create one more restrictive, right, we'll take away the city's right to be less restrictive, Sam, is that?
Well, they, whatever we create, they can be more restrictive, they just can't be.
Be less, yeah.
Whatever we do.
So I think it's just saying that we don't wanna take away the city's rights and their people's votes to supersede them. So if we keep it high level, they can make it more restrictive, but we're not gonna force that upon them.
That's a good idea.
I think that's where we gotta work with the cities to understand kind of where they're at, better understand, are they a thousand or are they, you know? And then we can always come in somewhere after that.
I don't think we should be under a thousand, I think we should stay at least there, I mean. But if we're not gonna override the cities, are we got any schools out in the country that's gonna be bothered by this?
One thing that could be a hangup is daycares, there could be a daycare, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
You know, you almost need to know where these businesses are to start with before you can, otherwise you're gonna screw two businesses, you know?
So, so align with that then, so when we look at prohibited within residential, completely prohibited in residential districts then, or zoning. That could be in conflict with what we're talking about, right? If, if they have a, I mean, we wanna possibly keep it away from daycare, school or something like that. But small businesses, there's, you know, I know some businesses that would be interested possibly in probably promoting some kind of products. So they're gonna have to get a license, you know, and then, but are they gonna have to move, you know, or not sell it out of their home and have a business?
Sam, what happens if I already have a cannabis business and a daycare opens next to me, do I have to move?
No, I wouldn't think so, no, I mean, I think, no, no, I don't, I don't think so, you're, they're coming to the nuisance, if you will.
Pre-existing, you have your license in place, yeah.
When I read this, it's not, so like the feedlot ordinance we have, it's required that it be reciprocal. So, but this was not written that way. So if they move in closer to you, that doesn't impact, yeah, that does not impact.
Could be next to it.
And I know, one of the cities has, using proposed distances, they had like law enforcement map out. Where, what could work, what, where could a cannabis business be? And I like, it was like one downtown in the city, one like just outside, it was like three or four spots.
That would be helpful.
That could potentially exist. And that's what the cities have done, or when the city did that, that way, just to figure out, okay, if, if we use these numbers, what do we do? What is, what does that allow, are we zoning, are we zoning these out of business? Or would there be multiple places that they could exist? And so that's, that may maybe one thing that has to be done at some point, but again, that, you know, that may be done by the municipality. If, if they are granted that authority to do that.
And I think one thing to think about there too is, that's a great point, I think you brought up, like, have you ever tried to acquire land in some of these cities? It's extremely hard to do, right? So not only, if you get too restrictive, you're essentially gonna eliminate people's opportunity, right? Cause only a limited amount of people are actually selling land, that might be appropriate for this in the first place. Then if you restrict, they have to be this far, you know, you might be in those spots, nobody's ever willing to sell, right? Somebody has that, they've had it, they're never selling, you kind of eliminate the opportunity for it ever being a thing. Not saying it should be right next to a daycare either, I'm not saying that, but something to think about.
Ladies, they gotta watch, a lot of them kids maybe need it.
So home occupations is a conditional use in the residential district too, so instead of prohibiting it, we could do a conditional use.
Well, if I wanted to have a store out of my house, I could just get a conditional use permit then, as a residential?
In theory.
You don't have to meet all the guidelines though, right, just like we do.
I mean, you just have to meet all the guidelines.
I think you could request a conditional use permit, she would write a report, suggest why or why not you qualify and then this board would decide if it makes sense, what happens.
At least that way you got control of it.
So a conditional use permit stays with the property, doesn't it?
Right, so that would be way be where an interim is a better option.
That's why I'm thinking maybe it'd be better if we went with the interim.
I would suggest, I was talking, John, I think the IUPs are probably the way to go with that, because as you're indicating, they run with the land, CUPs do. They're off probably with an IUP.
Yeah, interim, oh well, on a business anyway, you know.
Yeah, I don't, it's not like, like some of these, they're putting in infrastructure that's very specific to that business. And so that's where a CUP is a better option, because they'll wanna know that that, that can continue. But I think for these sort of proposals, although I'm not totally in on how the whole operations work. I think you're probably looking at a basic enough structure that it could generally be used for something else afterwards. So I guess just so we can kinda keep moving forward, it sounds like you're thinking more of an interim use in pretty much any district. I guess it sounds, do we wanna keep it out of the ag except for cultivation? Or are you fine allowing any sort of operation in the ag district?
One, one note on kind of what you said, just thinking about that, do you, would you want cultivation to be a conditional? For that reason of like you build up the infrastructure, build up the watering systems, et cetera, to do this and you sell that business to somebody? They would have to re-get the permit, right, to operate?
Yeah.
That might be one. Retail location's a little different, right, it's a retail storefront.
Yes.
Yeah, you have to redo it, you're not guaranteed, but if someone ever tried to sell the business and it was the cultivation side where you invested a lot of capital into that. and it was the cultivation side where you invested a lot of capital into that, you know, land and structure.
But they've already met the requirements, so they're more likely the new owner. It'd be more likely to get that, yeah, hopefully. Mm-hmm.
I guess they could have a purchase agreement contingent upon receiving approval for an IUP? Like an option to purchase? Yeah, okay, so that would probably take care of that problem.
Continue the business.
Yeah.
That's why they would be purchasing it.
They'd have to get a license from the state, too.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that wouldn't be an issue. You get an option to do that, I guess, right? That's what these guys, or the persons before had the option to.
Oh, the condition, yep.
Got the approval first, right?
Yep, and we do a fair amount that way.
Yep.
So are we ticking off any questions here that you have?
Yeah, I mean, do you guys want to, I know it's kind of a lot, so did you want to kind of go through that? Or I have an idea, I guess, of what you're looking at where I could put together better framework? And I don't know, ultimately, we aren't honest on a, like a drop dead deadline here, so we have time if we want to come back in November.
This chart is one example of Stearns County.
Yeah.
And so for each of these areas, they've got it prohibited in residential. But the others, it's all permitted in conditional or interim use permits. Not saying that's the way to go, right, wrong. It's sometimes having a place to start. I think that's what we're saying is, if we get some input, then we can give you something that's a draft. And it's a lot easier to respond to a draft with questions and concerns now than try to create the draft through group writing. That's always hard.
Would it be fair to say if, that you would be, if I would, if somebody asked me how the meeting went tonight? Well, would it be fair to say that when we're gonna permit this stuff, there seems to be a feeling that IUPs are more appropriate than a CUP as far as because they run with the land? You'd rather have that? Is that would be fair to say? That's, that's helpful, that's helpful to know.
Mm-hmm.
And when you look at that Stearns County draft, there, is there anything that just jumps out to you and says, nah, that doesn't make any sense to me?
I think we have to know more about this, like when we're talking about the residential development, you know. So do we have a restriction of, you know, the, how many feet, you know, within, within a housing development?
But then again, to answer the question, because you're saying, nothing says yes or no. It's a maybe because you need more information.
Mm-hmm. Interim possibly permitted. I just, you know, I don't know if we know enough about it to say prohibited or permitted, if there's not a happy medium, you know, with the interim in between.
What would be persuasive to you either way or be helpful to you to make a decision? Other charts from other counties, other, what type of information would you think would be helpful to make a decision?
This is helpful, but I, it would, this is just one county or one area.
But if we got more, but if these existed in multiple of the 87 counties, that would be helpful?
Mm-hmm.
So you could see maybe like a trend of, okay, this is generally what other places that are ag districts, small or agricultural counties, this is what they're doing. That would be helpful, then?
See how they, if they do interims.
Yeah, I kind of need an example.
See how the other townships are gonna handle this.
The other thing is, I think we know, you know, general business or limited industry, highway business, those are different animals, you know, that we can certainly look at and be more, you know, proactive with pushing some things out in those areas, which makes sense. It, it sounds like, you know, ag is gonna be restrictive for what's grown there. But then, and residential on the other end is what, it's more sales-focused, retail. So at least we could have an idea of, you know, where, where we're thinking about businesses. Also, you know, what the cities are doing or townships think.
So our township actually discussed this last month.
Good.
And we deferred, the county can take care of it.
Okay, it's good to know.
You know?
Well, like the zoning issue that we talked about before, that they can't enforce that, yeah.
We're not gonna make up new rules or enforce anything ourselves, so we're just going with what the county says.
So we'll come back to you with kind of a spreadsheet of what other counties are doing. Maybe perhaps maps of where, especially within the county, I guess, where are daycares and if there's any schools that would impact those areas? And also layout of where, what cities are looking at, trying to put an ordinance in place and where they're at. That's what I'm hearing.
We also had some key points brought up, you know, when we were talking about not being too restricted. So, you know, open market remains and, you know, if we had that, that discussion, I don't know if we need to make a lot of motions on some of these things because we need to know more about it. But just kind of an inkling of how everybody is thinking, what we want to do and, you know, do we not want to stifle the business development of it? Think about enforcement in the future, you know, who's gonna have to do that? So we're not just sticking it to someone else or ending up enforcing it. Like I said in the beginning, you know, the county board deciding which businesses are viable in the county is, is a bit much. Yeah.
On that note, what about number five? So it's limiting the, can't be 1,500 feet within another business?
Yeah, I see that, too. I didn't understand.
That'd be like, if somebody opens a bar, I can't open a bar down the street?
Yeah.
Compete against them?
It's to keep a concentration, concentrated area, or to avoid having a concentrated area.
District.
Yeah, and then it's permissive. It's something that counties could say.
I feel like you wouldn't want that.
They have it prohibited, or?
Yeah, I feel like.
Want that language at all?
Uh, if you want, if you want stuff kind of. Yeah, you want, I want five bars here and none else in my town, right? They're all right here.
Not all over, next to somebody's house.
Yeah, and you just think about it, I just think, obviously know the landscape of Caledonia a lot better. Retail downtown needs to be developed in a number of spots that's falling apart.
Well, this, this, this could be the county ordinance, but the cities could be less restrictive.
Right, which is the path I would say definitely go, but in general, using that.
You have to be more restrictive. It'd have to be more restrictive, not less restrictive.
The city.
Yeah, if, if, depending on where our ordinance is, they would generally, they would have to be more restrictive, not less restrictive, what they would have to be, unless we somehow ceded that decision to the, to the local municipality.
Using how you look at that, you mean less footage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just so, just so you can't do more than what we're.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten's a one, yeah.
More distance is more restrictive. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I get what you're saying, though. It's like, almost like a riddle.
So are we getting steps in the right direction, like I said, so we can get some?
I think you're giving us kind of an idea of how to proceed, anyway.
So far. I mean, I think this is just the beginning of some conversations that we definitely need to have. But it's hard to sit here and just, you know, think of things if we don't have materials or research on, you know, what's going on and then, you know, what are some options? And then also think about those goals, you know, as far as why are we making those decisions? Because I think if we sit here and, you know, publicly and say, I think this, just because, you know, that's not a very good analysis of, you know, what we're bringing forward and thinking about, in my opinion.
And we got all this material we can look at and then if we have questions or something, or you want to relay something to Amelia, you can call her.
Oh, boy.
Yes. All right, well, we'll just reconvene in November, then.
Do you want to do this at the workshop or do you want to just have another meeting like this?
Do you want us, well, do you want us, we can come to you guys at the workshop as well and kind of discuss, summarize for the rest of the commissioners that weren't here what was discussed tonight?
I, I think a discussion would be good because to publicly bring, or bring the public into this when we're not quite sure what we're mapping out, they really have nothing to comment on about that, you know.
Yeah.
Once you have a document, then they can comment on it.
Yes, exactly. Then you have something to go by.
Is there a meeting scheduled from November?
Yes.
Earlier, right?
We have a hearing for CUP in November, and we can have a meeting afterwards.
Trying to think if I have a, potentially the one that was postponed from a couple months ago might be coming. But I'm, I haven't touched base with them again to confirm that.
Can you let us know that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We could even just have a meeting if we have to.
Yeah, just call a meeting and a discussion on it, you know.
Be a good idea.
The longer we put it off, the more.
Right, it's gonna be earlier, that's what I said, because Thanksgiving is the end of.
Yeah, it's a week, it's a week earlier than usual, but we have an extra week in October, so there's really not that much.
On the 21st?
So, just a question and point of order, then, county board meeting, discussion on this next po, next month. Do you need information prior to that or, I'm curious of what your standpoint is?
We were hoping to have a recommendation from you guys.
Well, we have a few thoughts, but as far as, you know, details on, you know, how far and, you know, there's, or the zoning part of it, I think is what we really need to iron out.
Yeah.
At least we know it's more of an interim use.
Give you that. Instead of just having it a free-for-all, I can maybe bring in recommendations. I didn't want to like lead you guys on at all, but I have an idea of kind of where you're going with it now, so I can bring recommendations.
It'd be nice to know some options, you know, so we can get a handle on it because it's hard to just free-think, you know, what it, and also just to understand that it's, it's done. It's a done deal. We have to move forward with it eventually, I think, is a point that we have to keep in mind. Anything else?
You gotta keep your law enforcement in mind, too. They, if you have a different rule all over the place, there's no way they can actually do their job effectively. They've got other things to worry about also.
Yeah, the enforcement is gonna be tough, anyway, so.
You know, if they are going and there's different rules, you know, every, every time they walk into a place, it really makes it tough, you know. They're gonna spend too much time and they're just gonna give up on it.
I think you're, like, you're talking enforcement of the law is gonna be by the complaints. If people complain, then the law's gonna.
Yep, that's right.
Which is actually kind of the way it is with, you know, somebody that brings forward something that, with the conditional use permit or something, you know, they're against it or whatever. You know, that's how you find out about these things, where there's a violation of it.
Yep.
Basically, it's a complaint.
Okay. Well, moving on. It's a difficult subject. Anything else you guys want to discuss? Are you done? Are you all done or you have anything else? You let us know dates, give us materials. Make sure, just have a commitment to looking that over and discussing it then the next meeting so we can make some decisions.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Thank you, Josh.
Vikings are up 14-7 if you want to go.
Vikings are up?
14-7.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Action carries.